President.
Councilmember Norman.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Allen.
Here.
Councilmember Henry.
Here.
Vice Mayor Howery.
Here.
And Mayor Linsky.
Here, thanks. And please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is brief summary of current events by mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly known as for legal action. Anyone from council? Yes, please.
Had quite a few things going on the last couple of weeks. Councilmember Henry and I attended the Highland Department's ribbon cutting, which was awesome. It's a beautiful building. It's a senior establishment. It's got some subsidized housing, gorgeous facility. If you're ever interested, go take a look in there. They've already got a waiting list. I was lucky enough to be able to attend a helicopter ride in southern Arizona given by SRP, and what they did was they took several of us from the Verde Valley Leadership Program and flew us over all the water reservoirs in that local area. And I had no idea we already had seven dams in that area, and all of them, of course, becoming recreational. But the main reason is for water use for us and people down south. So it's a pretty neat event. The mayor and I attended the King's Casbah ribbon cutting right around the corner here, which is some awesome Mediterranean food. I don't usually do Mediterranean. That was a lot of fun. Several of us here on the council attended the Welcome Home Vietnam Vet event on Saturday, which was marvelously attended. I don't know what the count was, how many people we had there. Several hundred. It's just so precious to be able to see our vets, who were not welcomed home the first time they came, come there and say this is what we should have had the first time around, and literally with tears in their eyes. I mean, it just really touches your heart. It was an amazing event. Everybody that put that together, councilmember Alles and the crew just did an amazing job. And lastly, I attended the Police Department Appreciation Event. Great event, recognizing some Officers of the Year and some Civilian of the Year, well deserved. It was a great event held over at Blazanam Ranch. They did a good job for our officers. Mayor?
Thank you. Any other councilmembers have anything to report? Please.
I was also at the Highland Square Grand Opening and the Police Department Appreciation. And just want to let everyone know, there's a job fair tomorrow at Verde Valley Fairgrounds. And there's quite a few employers looking for employees, so anybody out there that's looking for a job, come on in.
Great. Councilmember Alt House?
I would just add, for the Welcome Home Vietnam Vets, my husband and I, along with Mr. Bartosz, were able to ride the Welcome Home Motorcycle Event, and the police departments throughout all of our towns did a wonderful job. We rode from Sedona through the village of Oak Creek, through Cornville, through Cottonwood, through Clarkdale, back through Cottonwood, to 12th Street Parks, without ever stopping. The police did an amazing job on the parade. It was, I can't thank them all enough. It was a wonderful experience.
Great, thanks. Any other councilmembers? No. I'll report, I think I attended most of what everyone here has said, with the exception of the Comic Book Expo. Did you go to the Comic Book Expo? Anybody else go to that? Did you go to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was great.
Very good, very well attended.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun. There were a lot of nerds among us. I had no idea. It was great, and such talent, you know, just an amazing amount of talent right here in the Verde Valley. I think there was one gentleman that flew out from New York, maybe a couple up from Phoenix, but otherwise it was all local talent. It was great to see. I did the Mayor's March as well on last, on the 23rd, I think that was, last month, and that was very well attended. Important cause, trying to raise money for Meals on Wheels Program. And Mickelson Race is this Saturday. I'm going to attempt to run that. It's on the agenda as well, but I'd encourage everyone to sign up for that. That's a great race. And Clarkdale Home Tour, too, is that same day, this Saturday. Clarkdale, those folks help us out a lot, too, with our Cottonwood Home Tour, so I try to plug their home tour as well, but they've helped out in the past with planning our home tour here in Cottonwood, which takes place in November, but it'd be great if the community, too, could go support their home tour. And they do a great reenactment of the bank robbery on their main street there in Clarkdale, so. That's all I have. City Manager, do you have anything to report?
Just a couple things, and I'm just going to mention the Mickelson Run. Are you doing the 10K?
Hopefully.
Be assured that the police chief and I will be coming in behind you. Also, on April 15th is the annual Easter egg hunt. And that'll go from 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon at Riverfront Park in this year's events.
Mr. Bartosz?
We've got about $2,500 worth of candy and stuffed animals, movies, and food coupons. Very, always a well-attended event, so get there early. And then on April 29th, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, we have our annual community cleanup, and we do that in cooperation with the county and Clarkdale. We make the transfer station available at no cost to everybody to bring up and dump off their trash, things they want to get rid of, and help us clean up the community in the Verde Valley.
Great, okay. All right, move on then to call to the public. We do have one form that's filled out. If there's anybody out there in the public that would like to address the council, you can pick up the yellow form in the back and fill it out and hand it over to the city manager to speak. I will say that this portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. So, again, if there's anybody out there that'd like to address us, please fill out a form. Otherwise, I'll call forward Mr. John Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And you are limited to five minutes.
Yeah, I'll do my best. I've got some items here I wanted to address. As you know, the last time I was up here, I asked some questions. And I wanted to take a moment here to briefly, well, first of all, I want to commend four of you for responding to me. This shows not only good business practice, but it shows common courtesy. Two of you actually responded to me immediately, and I appreciate that. I mean, you showed me some dignity. And that was very much appreciated. And I took, I, I'm going to read some of this because I'm I'm not happy, okay, just so for the record, and I want this public. And two of you even agreed to meet with me, and I appreciate the time that you took. And we discussed some things that I think are really pertinent to the city. They were very productive, and I felt really good about it. And on 2/21, I asked some very simple questions of your individual governing practices and your philosophical positions regarding fiscal responsibility. And, you know, I have a question here, and if memory serves me correctly, I was, I used to sit in a chair that you're now occupying a little over 15 years ago, in a city about this size. And, you know, I always responded to people when they asked me questions. And as a matter of fact, I met with them a lot of times. And if I'm not mistaken, you all took an oath of office. Am I correct? And you also all took a bond in order to serve. Isn't that also correct? Okay? And what that does, to me, it indicates that you've got some responsibility. And I know I'm just one guy, okay? But I deserve a little bit of respect, I think, especially as a taxpayer. Because you guys work for me, not just me, but a lot of citizens, all right? And three of you chose not to respond to me, even after two appeals. I find it utterly amazing that those of you who didn't respond after my appeals apparently think so little of me that you would easily blow me off. What, and what does that say of you? Are you so arrogant that you deem me insignificant? And when it comes to something, or you would answer a question that you disagree with or not worthy of response, are you not all accountable to the residents of of Cottonwood according to your oath of office? I could read your oath of office. I've taken it a number of times, okay? I must humbly submit, what you are demonstrating to me is a total lack of respect. And you know who you are that didn't respond, I think. But not just to me, but to the other residents of Cottonwood. In other words, if you think so small of me, you must think of everybody else in the same way, which I think is deplorable. I can assure you, I'm not alone. As I've heard numerous times from a lot of different people, there's a current of disgust of what's going on down here, and and I'll quote the mayor's previous comments, which I cited last time. "The lack of trust was very apparent on our campaign trail. Concerns about budget, upper management, what the citizens are getting out of it, the return on investment were major concerns." It appears to me that what we now have, are seeing in Cottonwood, is not public service, but appears to be self-service. Okay? And that's readily seen by the continuing outrageous spending and losing propositions in so-called local investments and opportunities initiatives, continuing, increasingly spiraling out of control debt, unfunded local pension obligations, and by the way, it's a brief cursory little investigation on your part would surely show you that. And that's not just here, it's all over the country. We are also, and I'll address this to you two, because between both of you, you're, I don't know whether the public is completely aware, but between the two of you, you're milking the taxpayer for about a half a million dollars a year. That, to me, is outrageous as well. It appears to me what you're turning this public service into a public milking machine, enriching yourselves at the taxpayer's expense.
Mr. Mitchell?
Are we done?
That was your five minutes, my friend.
That's it? Well, I apologize for that.
If you'd like to-
I said everything I had to say.
If you'd like to forward your responses to council, you're more than welcome to.
Yeah, I'd like that. I'll send you my talking points. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, approval of the minutes, regular meeting of March 7 and 21, 2017. Do you hear any corrections?
I didn't write them down. I do know that I did not attend a meeting with Ms. Allen. It was Ms. Henry. And I saw my name. I'm like, I didn't go to that.
Yeah, we've already clarified that with the city clerk. He understands. Just swap the names, and then there's one misspelling. That's it. Everything else is good.
Okay, great. Motion to approve then? I'll motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, so mayor made the motion. Pfeiffer seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. We move on then to the consent agenda. We have one item under the consent agenda, Resolution Number 2876, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Yavapai County for the county to participate in Cottonwood's community cleanup event scheduled for April 29th, 2017. Any councilmembers wish to pull this from the consent agenda? Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, so Pfeiffer motioned, and Norman seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion's approved. Deputy Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2876.
Resolution Number 2876, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Yavapai County for the county to participate in Cottonwood's community cleanup event. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Okay, new business. We have seven items to go over tonight. First is Resolution Number 2867, appointing a member to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Mr. Faust, if you would introduce yourself, please.
Yes, Richard Faust, Community Services General Manager for the city of Cottonwood, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, in your packet tonight is information as it pertains to, we have two open positions for the Parks and Recreation Commission. And at this point in time, we thought we were only going to have one, but we had Cindy Burton, who just resigned from the commission. And Cindy was in an automobile accident. She is all right, so we'll thank goodness for that. Down in the Phoenix area, but she's also been trying to take care of her brother, so she just felt that it would be best at this point in time to go ahead and do that. So so there remains two vacant positions, one for a full three-year term and the other for a term which would expire then for Cindy Burton on August 21st, 2019. Staff is requesting that council appoint Ms. Jacobs to fill that three-year term, which would then give the commission six members. And human resources would then continue to advertise for the vacant position then for Ms. Burke. And you have the information in your packet there as it pertains to Ms. Jacobs, and we did ask, I think there's been two requests on email for her to be here tonight. Nope, apparently not.
Darn. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, council, how would you like to proceed? She's not here tonight. Would you like to move forward with the appointment, or wait till we can bring her back? So council can make her feel uncomfortable in public?
I'm sorry. I know, I know we had one individual last time that wasn't able to attend, and we just asked that they be brought to us next time. So I think that would be acceptable.
Okay. Does that work for council?
I just had a question.
Sure.
Is she a resident of the city? The address is redec- redacted?
Yes.
Okay, because I noticed you've discussed Cornville, and-
She says she's lived in Cottonwood for three years.
Okay.
Okay. Just for the benefit of the public, we do have our application in front of us, and she is, you know, has the experience to be on this commission. All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do I hear a motion, council?
Can I, I move to approve Resolution 2867, appointing Monica Jacobs to the city Parks and Recreation Commission for a three-year term expiring April 4th, 2020.
Second.
Okay, so councilmember Allen made the motion. Councilmember Pfeiffer seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion is approved. Deputy Clerk, please read Resolution 2867.
Resolution Number 2867, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Monica Jacobs, a member of the city of Cottonwood Parks and Recreation Commission, and establishing her term of office. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Okay, moving on, Resolutions Number 2868, 2869, and 2870, appointing members to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Baron Najat, how are you?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, in the last meeting, you interviewed several members for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Would you just take a minute to introduce yourself, please, to the public? Thank you.
Baron Najat, Community Development Director.
Thank you.
And so you had several candidates for the three open positions, and tonight, staff is expecting you to assign those three positions.
Okay. So again, as background, we had more applicants than seats available for this particular commission, so council, back at the beginning of the year, created a new process for appointing members to these commissions. So there's a public interview process where the council scores the applicants. And then there's a selection committee which meets, and they score the applicants as well on a blind matrix, so that the selection committee doesn't know who they're scoring. They just base, they're scoring off of the qualifications of the applicants. So based off that, it looks like the three highest-ranked applicants would be Judd Wozden, Ed Kyler, and Thomas Narwood, all of whom currently serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission, so.
I have a question.
Sure.
So at the last meeting, I had asked a question. The justification section says that at least two of whom shall be qualified by design-related background, training, and experience, including architecture, landscape, architecture, interior design, planning, fine arts, and other design-related background. So do one of these three meet that qualification? And which one?
We already have those two. We have one architect already, and one interior designer in the commission. So these new members didn't have to meet that qualification.
At the last meeting, you stated you only had one of the two.
Interior design. We were talking about design. We had one design and one architect.
So who, what are the names of those people?
Commissioner Hart is the architect, and Suzanne Pastieko is a designer.
So then once their terms expire, then of course we'll have, or if they should resign, then we would need to fill that vacancy with, okay?
And what is the term, I guess I could look here. So we went until 19. And Hart. Okay, 18. Okay, so then, Mr. Hart, okay.
Any other questions from council?
I guess, Mr. Linsky, or Mayor Linsky, going forward, maybe when we have requirements like this, that could be called out in the list for us, where it has appointments and who's listed, it could call, we could call out if they meet. That might help.
Sure.
So, so, yeah, I'm just, for future, we're trying to work out this whole, this whole process, and if we have very specific requirements, I just want to make sure that we're meeting those, so if it's called out, it might be easier for us. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Do I hear a motion? If not, I'll motion to approve Resolution 2868, appointing Judd Wozden, a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a three-year term that expires March 22, 2020.
Second.
Okay, so mayor made the motion, vice mayor seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay.
I move to approve Reso, do we need to read before?
No, I think we just do it all at once.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2869, appointing Ed Kyler, a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a three-year term that expires March 22, 2020.
Second.
Okay, so councilmember Allen made the motion, and councilmember Norman seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, that motion's approved.
Okay, I move to approve Resolution Number 2870, appointing Thomas Narwood to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll second that. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Pfeiffer made the motion, mayor seconded. Okay, thanks. All right, so deputy clerk, please read Resolution Number 2868, 2869, and 2870.
Resolution Number 2868, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, appointing Judd Wozden, a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, establishing his term of office. Resolution Number 2869, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, appointing Ed Kyler, a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, establishing his term of office. And Resolution Number 2870, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, appointing Thomas Narwood, a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, establishing his term of office. Mr. Mayor?
Very good, thank you. Okay, next item is interview of applicants for the personnel board. And again, this is a for the citizen-at-large members of the personnel board, this is a board that received more applicants than seats available, so we'll go through the public interview process. Hoping that all the members are here, but I'm not seeing Mr. Kyler. So I'm not sure that is he notified of the meeting tonight?
Iris notified him previously.
Okay.
Mr. Docrey's not here either.
Mr. Docrey's not here? Okay, so there Helene Kurat, is that correct? Ma'am, if you would just stay seated, I just want to make sure that you're in attendance. Thank you. And then there's another Mr. Paul Anderson, are you here tonight as well? Thank you. Council, how would you like to proceed?
We can't interview them if they're not here, so we either have to decide if that zeros or reschedule, which isn't fair to the people that showed up.
Right. I'm assuming Ms. Dobler let Steve Docrey know as well?
I'm asking her to approach the recorder.
Please.
Amanda Wilbur, HR manager. As far as I know, she did. I know Ed Kyler was notified at the last meeting that he was at. We talked to him in person. And Iris, the previous HR manager, did say that she notified the applicants. But I do know that I did not send out any reminders.
Okay. Do we get confirmation that they would be attending?
I'm not 100% sure.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, since we wouldn't be making a decision until two weeks from now, could we possibly interview the two that are here tonight, have the two that are not here come to the work session at our next meeting, interview them, and still be able to make the decision? Just throwing something out there. Nobody has to agree with me.
No, that makes good sense. We're not making a motion tonight. We're simply interviewing candidates, so then we can seek a response from Mr. Docrey and Kyler to see if they will or will not show up for the interview?
I can reach out to both of them.
Okay.
But that would be at the work session.
At the work session.
At the next meeting, so we could still proceed with our timeline.
Mm-hmm, okay. Thank you.
I'm going to step down.
Very good.
I'm on the selection committee.
Okay, thank you. All right, so does that sound good with rest, council? We'll move forward then, so
Absolutely.
In order that they're presented in our packet, I'm going to call up, stay seated for a second, Helene, is it Kurat? And then Mr. Anderson as well. So let me just briefly explain to you this process, okay, because this is different than the way the council's done it in the past. Essentially, we're going to call you up for a public interview. We're going to ask you three simple questions. And we'll score the applicants. And then that, this score will be combined with the score from the selection committee, which based its score off, you know, without knowing your names, essentially, just based it off of your qualifications. And then once those scores are tallied, then we'll make the appointments at a future council meeting like we did just earlier tonight for the Planning and Zoning Commission, so. With that being said, I'm going to call forward Helene Kurat, please. Okay, thanks for being here. Thank you for filling out an application. First question is, please tell us why you wish to serve on this board?
I just wanted to get more involved in the community, and I didn't have a background in architecture or civil engineering, so seemed like a better choice.
Okay. All right, next question is, what are your specific qualifications to serve on the personnel board?
I've been responsible for hiring and firing technicians for way longer than I want to admit to. Now I have my own shop, so I get to make all those decisions anyway.
Okay. And lastly, what do you hope to accomplish during your appointment?
Just to hopefully Good question. Just to listen to what's going on and hopefully help them make better decisions as to how to handle certain situations.
Mm-hmm, okay. Do you have any questions for us? No? Okay, thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next I will call when my computer wakes up and I can remember, is it Paul Anderson?
Yes, sir.
Please, please come up and and
Mayor, councilmembers, good evening.
You know the questions, but I'll read it out loud for you. Question one is, please tell us why you wish to serve on this personnel board?
First of all, I like people. I'm a people person. I'm a people person. I now have the interest, the energy, and the time to be available. I also possess compassion, integrity, and empathy, which I think lend themselves to the position. I enjoy guiding employees in a positive direction in the context of collaboration and compromise. I believe it's imperative to recognize employees' contributions, contributions also. I don't think we do enough of that. The divorce rate's what, 51% now? So somebody's not telling somebody else how good they are. So perhaps we can do a better job than that as a city.
Very good. The second question is, what are your specific qualifications for the Personnel Board?
I'm a good listener. I'm, I tend to be analytical, and I do well in investigations. I've been on a district contract negotiations team with classified employees. I was a co-director of a citywide, three-tiered training institute at a university, and we assessed and developed teachers and administrators in positive communication skills and conflict resolution. As a school administrator, historically, I've evaluated staff and solved grievances. I want to mention that I am a team player. I noticed the City College Board seems to have some issues with team players, and I was very interested in that, but turns out, I was blessed with not having to participate in that. I'm just pointing that out, I'm not making a judgment, just saying, doesn't sound like a team player construct to me, for, you know more than I do, I guess, about that, just being here longer than I've been here. So it's important to me to be a team player, particularly supporting the three employees from the city that are on the commission, the board. And I, I mentioned, yeah, I think I pretty much covered that.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Last question is, what do you hope to accomplish during your appointment?
I wrote down, I wanted to thank God for Cottonwood. I've been here less than a year, and I'm just grateful for the opportunity to pay a mortgage, well, not for that opportunity so much, but to have a home and to enjoy what you've already planted here, you know, the seeds of progress and cooperation. And I was at the last meeting here, and I'm impressed with the consciousness of the council and your attempt to work for the whole of the city, not just particularly self-interest groups. I'd like to contribute it in a, in the positive progress of this city and, and support its residents as it relates to city employees through kindness, cooperation, and compromise.
Very good. Mr. Anderson, do you have any questions for us?
Yes, I have one. I met Iris briefly and talked to her on the phone a couple times. Has she been acknowledged for, has she been recognized for her work?
There was a, there was a going-away celebration for, for Iris across the street here.
Okay.
Yes.
And my other question would be, when would I, if I'm chosen, have access to a employee's manual, for city employees?
I would imagine that would be when you receive your packet to serve on the Board and Commission, you would receive a packet, likely receive that manual then as well.
Thank you.
I believe they did present Ms. Dobler with the framed photo as well.
Beautiful. Beautiful photo. The Verdi River.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The gentleman's referring to the, the Board and Commission manual or the employee manual, both of those are, are public documents, and Mr. Anderson would be entitled to those tonight.
Okay.
I think the Personnel manuals, I think they're both online. I know the Personnel manual is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks to the applicants very much, so we'll review this at a future council meeting. We'd also like to interview the other two applicants that applied as well, so we will keep you informed. Thank you for applying. Okay, moving on, we have Resolution Number 2795, appointing Anna Kramer as an Associate City Magistrate and establishing her term of office. Mr. Judge Lasota, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself, please, to the council.
Evening, Mayor Linsky, councilmembers. I'm A. Douglas Lasota, Presiding Magistrate for the County Municipal Court. And the first person we're asking to be reappointed as Associate Magistrate is Anna Kramer. Maybe you knew her before, it was Anna Curtin, she got married within the past couple of years, so it's now Anna Kramer. And she's been with us since November of 2009 as a clerk, and she went to New Judge Orientation School in 2015, was appointed by this body for a two-year term, May 7th of 2015, and we're requesting that she be appointed again for another two-year term, and she's done an excellent job whenever she's had to step into that role in our court.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions for Judge Lasota?
For motion?
Sure.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2795, appointing Anna Kramer, Kramer? As an Associate Magistrate for a two-year term, starting May 7th, 2017, and I need to wear my glasses.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Allhouse made the motion, Allen seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So Deputy Clerk, please read Resolution 2795.
Resolution Number 2795, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Anna Kramer as an Associate Magistrate and establishing her term of office. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next, Resolution Number 2879, appointing Janie Randall as an Associate Magistrate for a two-year term.
Thank you again, A. Douglas Lasota, Presiding Magistrate. One thing is, all three, the, three of our Associate Magistrates, they save the city substantial sums of money from what it used to cost before for pro temp costs. For fiscal year 2016, we had zero pro temp costs we had to pay. Currently, in fiscal year 2017, we've had zero pro temp costs that we've had to pay. And a lot of that is due to Anna Kramer, Janie Randall, and Lynn Reardon, who have all been willing to cover in my absence, so that we don't have to pay those costs, which are really unnecessary, since we have such qualified individuals serving in our court. Janie has been with us as a court administrator since November of 2009. In 2010, we sent her to New Judge Orientation School as well, and she graduated that, and this body appointed her on July 6th of 2010. I've set forth her experience in, in quite a bit of detail. Additionally, Janie brings us additional benefit of having diversity in the court as well. I believe she's the only Hispanic judge within Yavapai County as well, so she brings us both the quality of, of her as a person, plus bringing diversity as well, which are both excellent benefits to our court. And again, she's helped save us quite a bit of money over the time that she's been here on pro, pro temp costs, so I'd ask that she be reappointed as well for another two-year term.
Very good. Any questions, Counsel? Okay, well, I'll move to approve Resolution Number 2879, reappointing Janie Randall as an Associate Magistrate for a two-year term effective May 7, 2017.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion, and Councilmember Norman seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Deputy Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2879.
Resolution Number 2879, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, reappointing Janie B. Randall as an Associate City Magistrate and establishing her term of office. Mr. Mayor.
Very good, thanks. And last but not least, Resolution Number 2877, appointing Mary E. Hamm as an Associate Magistrate.
Thank you again, A. Douglas Lasota, Presiding Magistrate. We're requesting that Mary Hamm be reappointed as a pro temp. She's outside of our court system, she's one of the pro temps to cover weekend jail court duty through, for, for Yavapai County, so she ends up handling some of our cases that way on occasion, on, on weekends. She's had three two-year terms that she's served, served in this court, and even though we have a number of Associate Magistrates within the court, we still need to have a couple of outsiders, her and Paul Julian, just in case we have any conflicts or we have to go outside the court because of any conflicts that may exist as, as the total court system. She's always willing and available to cover whenever we need her. We haven't had to use her for a couple of years on weekdays, but she does, as I indicated, serve occasionally on, on weekends to, when, when she's covering for countywide, in-court custody matters.
Okay. Now, is there a difference between pro temp and Associate Magistrate?
Yes, Associate Magistrates, maybe Steve can give you a little further information, but the pro, pro temps are normally attorneys, well, Paul Julian isn't because he doesn't have, doesn't have to be, but they normally work outside the court system. Associate Magistrates are ones that can work within the court system on a part-time basis first, and they can step, be in one role and step into the other role as Associate Magistrate easier, and it's, it's a statutory thing that, that calls them different things, but the ones that work within the court are called Associate Magistrates, and the ones that we bring in from outside the court system are called pro temps.
Okay. The reason I ask is the way it's presented at councils, that we would appoint her as an Associate Magistrate.
Oh, I meant to be pro temp if I did. I thought it was...
Okay.
I, I'd move to amend that to be as a pro temp. She is a pro temp.
And, and pro temps are temporary appointees who, who we pay on a per diem basis?
There's nothing, there's no legal obstacles to changing that motion tonight?
No.
Right, okay, great.
And she's at $50 an hour when we have to use her, so...
I did have a question. How, have we had, had to use her in the last couple of years? I mean, you said she's been used outside, but has Cottonwood had to use and pay, pay her in the last couple of years?
No, not in the past two years. Fiscal year 2016 and fiscal 2017, we haven't. So 2015, I think there was this period of time that we had to use her then, especially when I was getting all the education down in Phoenix, on, on the, did some different certificates and certifications that I went after, we used her during that time period as well. But we really need to have her just in case, because we had one case with a Patriot types, we had to use up three of us on one case on, on one day, because we had to go through different reams of motions and refusals and that type of thing. So every once in a while, if we, if, if we all get stuck with conflicts on certain cases, we need someone like her from the outside who can just step in that doesn't know anybody and is from outside the city.
Okay.
I have a question.
Please.
So we have four available judges right now.
Yes, and, and we also have a civil traffic hearing officer as well, that's a clerk slash Associate.
So four judges and then a civil traffic off, hearing officer, and then this pro temp is a sixth judge?
And also, there's a Paul Julian, so there's four, six total.
So a seventh with Paul.
There's, there's, well, there's three that are Associate Magistrates, Janie, Randall, Lynn Reardon, and Anna Kramer. And then, there's a civil traffic hearing officer who's also a clerk, and that's Ricky Burgara. And then, there's the two pro temps, which is Paul Julian, who works for AOC as, as their Judicial Education Officer, and Mary Hamm, so six of them counting right. And plus myself, seven, yes, if you meant to count me.
And, Mr. Mayor and Ms. Henry, four, the first four the judge mentioned are, are court employees working under the supervision of the Presiding Magistrate.
I understand that, I'm just trying to imagine, I mean, our city court system appears to challenge our county court system almost with the number of, of judges that we currently have available, and I don't, I just don't know that we have the current caseload. I understand when there is a conflict or the need for a recusal, but where we haven't used her for several years, I'm not sure we need to have an appointment, that's one question. The other question is, did we advertise this position? She's had, it sounds like, three two-year terms, and we're going for her fourth two-year term, so, so a total of eight years. Have we asked for other applicants for the position?
No, because we, we haven't really needed any other in the past couple of years, so we assumed it wouldn't be an issue as, as to her for another, another term, because, like I said, we're not, we're not having to use her, and she's just needed just on occasion, on an emergency basis if something comes up in the way of conflicts.
Is Mr. Julian available on an emergency basis as well?
No, he has to come up from Phoenix, and we have to line him up in, in advance. In the past, sometimes we've used him when, when there's been conferences or something that I've had to go to, and I've had him come up, and he only took, we only have to pay him his travel costs up and back, so there's, there's been maybe two or three cases we've had to use him on a special basis for, because I've had to recuse myself for whatever reason, and we've been able to bring him up, and just the transportation costs, not for, not having to pay the $50 an hour.
And does Ms. Hamm charge a transportation cost from Prescott, or does she solely charge the $50 per hour?
It's just the $50 an hour when she's here in the court.
Okay.
But even, you know, a, a, as far as your, your comments about numbers, you know, I'm there virtually all the time, but when, when I'm on the bench on one case, and someone comes to the front of the window and may need a motion for extension of time for payments or something like that, we don't have to make that person wait, we don't have to interrupt what's going on in court, someone can handle that right at the front window as well. So, you know, they bring a lot of flexibility on handling things on a productivity basis by working in the front too. Plus, like I said, if, if a couple of us have to recuse ourselves, then that still leaves somebody there that's in the court that can step into it. The most recent case where we had a DUI trial, we had to go through three of us, because I had to recuse myself to start with, and then Judge Reardon got appointed, and then they moved for change of judge for cause on her, so then Anna Kramer had to step in and do the hearing on the motion for change of judge for cause, so, you know, and if she would've had to grant that, then we would've had to go to Janie Randall next, and that would've wiped out everybody that we, we had there, so. I mean, it, it's rare that they have to be used that much, but, but it's essential that they're there, because we don't have to continue cases. I don't, I can't think of any case we've had to continue because we were short a judge. We've always got someone in there that can just step right into it if, if we need to. And that's something that most courts don't have. You know, if one of the Superior Court judges, if they get in a car accident on the way to the court, you don't have someone you can just plug in that easy, you know, yet maybe some other judge has to help do their docket, or they have to call in a pro temp, maybe there's delays. With us, there's no delays, there's always somebody there that can step right into that role.
And Judge, I applaud your practice of having our current court employees serve as judges as needed, so as our Associate Magistrates, but Ms. Hamm is not a court, current court employee, she isn't available to take those fees if somebody stops by, and we haven't used her, we've, it sounds like had her kind of on reserve for several years.
Well, let's look at it this way, if we, and I apologize for interrupting, if, if one of you got a traffic ticket, it wouldn't be fair for any of us who, we rely on you guys to make salary decisions, to have to do that case. Someone like her could, could step in. You know, like I indicated, the case where we had the, the Patriot type that we had to go through a bunch of judges, if we have to, then she would've been needed to be appointed to have her. But we don't need, it's not something that we need regularly, it's just something in the odd case that we may need her, we've got her appointed, and we can bring her in, she's already a pro temp within Yavapai County as a whole, she already sees some of our cases periodically when she works on weekend jail court, so she's familiar with our, our processes and our procedures and that type of thing, and we don't have to, you know, re-educate her. If we brought somebody else in, if we opened it up and had to bring someone else in, we'd have to have however many days of training and going over procedures with them, and we'd have to pay them $50 an hour for that. We don't have to do that with her, and we've kept our costs, you know, the past couple of years down to zero.
Is your concern, Councilmember Henry, that, that the way in which we've, are, are going to appoint her, considering the appointment, because we didn't go out to seek other applicants? Or is your concern just the position in general?
It's both.
Both, okay.
We have a, you know, number of appointments, and I'm just seeking information about if we have the caseload and the need, we've heard information that we don't really have the need for this pro temp. Also, I have concern where we have successive reappointments here, we're going on, if, if she has appointed somebody who will have had an appointment for eight years. And that, that leads to my final question, and that is, when was this position last, you know, sent out for either, you know, applications, I don't think it's a bid process, but for applications for the...
I think it was back when, when she and Paul Julian first started, of course, Paul volunteered to, to come up and assist us too, so, you know, we got him waving his hourly fee to come up and help us, because he has family members in the community, I think his mother and father lived here, I think one of them is deceased now, but he likes coming up every once in a while, so when we ask him to do that, he generously agrees to, you know, come up without charging us the fee and just for, just for his costs.
And that's not unusual, there are other jurisdictions that have volunteer pro temp judges. A very close associate of mine, it has been a judge for years and is a volunteer pro temp in another jurisdiction, so it's not as though it's an uncommon practice.
I don't have an issue with, with appointing the position, but I, I think out of principle, I can get on board with the fact that we didn't go out to seek other applicants, because it, you know, we do that for every other opening, and at least try to secure some kind it, we do that for every other opening, and at least try to secure some kind of, you know, to test the pool, make sure that people know that it's an open process, and we don't just routinely reappoint, reappoint, reappoint.
And if you want to have a bigger pool, there's no problem with that too, or, I mean, if you decide you want to reopen it up and have everybody else apply, then that's fine too, whatever council's pleasure is.
Judge, has this been advertised ever, to your knowledge, as a volunteer position in this city?
Not as a volunteer position. And we've, the pro temps have to be attorneys, so it wouldn't be anybody that's a non-attorney. And the other thing too, is there's so few attorneys in town, most of them, including yourself, have ended up having to appear before the court, so I know some courts have it to where you can't be a pro temp on occasion and also practice before that court, but I think the better practice is to keep it cleaner, is to have it to where no one can claim that there was any favoritism for someone who has to appear before me or one of the other judges, and by working with us. I think, you know, some people would claim that that's unfair, because, oh, they're an associate judge, they work with those other judges, they're going to have an advantage when they appear before one of those judges. That could be claimed, not that that would happen in reality with any of us that are there, that it would make a difference to any of us, but it, the appearance of impropriety might be there in some people's minds, even though it's not an actual ethical or other impropriety.
Thank you.
So whatever your pleasure is, I mean, if you want us to open it up, we can open it up, but I think for now, we need to have her just in case, you know, something comes up.
How does the rest of council feel on this? Let's go down the line, if you don't mind. Councilmember Allen, do you have any concerns?
Let's open it back up. There's no reason we don't need to. We can do that. It's an easy process, get it done.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
Well, we're going to have this person on board for two years, and maybe two years from now, we look at it a little closer and maybe go out, advertise the job at that point.
Councilmember Al House, how do you feel?
I agree with the Vice Mayor. I mean, if, the training and getting someone on board, she's been doing it, she knows what the, you know, city needs, she's had the training, and if we don't use her that often or need her that often, it's $50 an hour, so I would like to move forward with the appointment.
Okay. Councilmember Norman, how do you feel?
I feel the same way. She hasn't been used, but at least she's there if they need them.
Okay. And Councilmember, or Piper?
I feel the same way too. After what we went through before with the courts, it was a fiasco, so it's been running so smooth, I'd hate to rock that boat, but maybe in two years, we should consider going out for a bid.
One other factor too, Mayor, is that we probably would really need, if we had somebody different, to also send them to the New Judge Orientation School, which is three weeks down in Phoenix, including paying for hotel rooms and travel and mileage and $50 an hour, and, you know, it'd get a little expensive that way too, unless there's somebody that's already a pro temp judge, and there's only really a couple of them that are out there as pro temps within Yavapai County that are available.
Now, did we send Mary Hamm down to that training in Phoenix, or did she come on?
She had that before.
Okay. So it's possible that when we seek other applicants, they will already have had that training as well?
Well, the only other one that I know of is on the other side of the mountain, and she's, she has her own justice court, and she's, works a lot in the Prescott Court, so she wouldn't really have that much available ability to come over here.
We could...
I don't know that she would apply, is my point.
We could include that in part of the qualifications or ask that, you know, we would want someone that already had the training.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion.
Well, just second. In two years, things may change as far as the different people who would be qualified that could step in also.
It's possible.
So I think if we proceed now, and in two years, we go out and see what we can conjure up, and maybe not, maybe this person gets in again, but at least that's when we have that opportunity.
Okay.
Does that, I don't think that needs to be part of the motion, that's just a direction to staff, really, right?
I think that's enough, yeah.
So we're going pro temp?
That's correct, yeah, not Associate Magistrate, but pro temp.
Yeah, I apologize for that error, that's my fault.
So are you ready for a motion?
Please.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2877, reappointing Mary E. Hamm as pro temp for a period of two years, starting April 18th, 2017, at the rate of $50 per hour.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Al House made the motion, Councilmember Norman seconded it all in favor.
Aye.
So, any opposed?
No.
No. Did you catch all that? Sorry, I should have done a roll call vote, and I apologize, but it was, in favor is Allen, Vice Mayor Hadergi, Councilmember Piper, Norman, and Al House in favor.
And what about you?
I'm opposed, as is Councilmember Henry, and the reason for my opposition is just that I feel like we should have limits to this position and open it up for other applicants.
That's fair. Whatever council thinks appropriate is your call.
So there's not the appearance of just, you know, successive appointments.
I have no strong feelings where it is, or whatever, I mean, it's your decision, and that's fine with me.
Very good, thank you. So anyway, the motion passes. Deputy Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2877.
Resolution Number 2877, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Mary E. Hamm as an pro temp magistrate?
Judge Pro Temp.
Judge Pro Temp Magistrate and establishing her term of office. Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Judge.
You wouldn't have the word magistrate at the end, it would just be Judge Pro Temp.
Oh, Judge Pro Temp, okay.
Thanks, Judge, appreciate it. All right, next item, last item on the list here is authorization to apply for a right-of-way permit to use county right-of-way for the 2017 Brian Mickelson Memorial Marathon. Mr. Bigelow, if you would introduce yourself, please, thanks.
I will. Mr. Mayor, Council, Ryan Bigelow, Recreation Services Supervisor, here tonight to discuss the approval to sign the agreement of the Yavapai County Right-of-Way for the 2017 Brian Mickelson Memorial, which is Saturday, April 8th. A little background, the event has been going on since 2009, and in 2012, we added a full marathon for full torture of the runners.
Five years.
And then, in that marathon, we included about a mile of Yavapai County property. In 2013, we had a volunteer actually sustain an injury while manning a water station out there. That volunteer tried to have a lawsuit against the county and the city, which was inevitably, or which was later ruled in the city's favor, and they dismissed the county out of that lawsuit. But since then, the county has required a little more thorough right-of-way permit, if you will. This current right-of-way permit has language that specifically relates to the liability and financial responsibility for the City of Cottonwood to indemnify and hold harmless Yavapai County. We provide Yavapai County a certificate of insurance, which we have done. They require that to happen 30 days prior to the event, which we did 30 days prior to the event. At that point, they issued a right-of-way permit for us to approve and sign.
Okay. So then the runners that are out there foolish enough to run a full marathon, they've already signed a waiver, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so they can't sue anybody if they should trip and scrape their knee?
That includes the Yavapai County in that waiver.
Okay. So the issue then becomes with the volunteers manning the...
The volunteers sign a similar waiver as well. I'm not sure I'm qualified to answer.
I'm just curious how much we're opening ourselves to exposure, you know?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I want to be a little bit circumspect in public about that, but that's a question with a complicated answer, and even to the extent, I think it's Councilmember Henry knows, waivers are not always absolutely enforceable in Arizona. There, the county is asking for, and I think we did include this in the communication, greater indemnity than we and our carrier think is appropriate and what we ordinarily would give or would expect of a counterparty, but this is one of those take it or leave it propositions.
Is there a question we could ask you with a simple answer?
Yes.
There you go, that was it.
All right, it's good to know. Well, we can put our best volunteers out there, right? Our most trusted volunteers?
Always, and, yeah, we try to, we try to wake them up a little earlier, so they're a little more aware of what's going on.
Give them some donuts.
Get a wine?
Clippy donuts.
Well, I hate to, you know, kill a good thing on account of a couple of bad apples, so this is a great event. I think the risk is small. I hope the risk is small. Counsel, how do you feel?
Can I do a blaster in the past?
Sure.
It's a no-brainer. Okay, I got it off my chest, we're good now.
You want to make a motion?
Can we make a motion? Absolutely. I move to authorize the city manager to execute the application for a right-of-way permit from Yavapai County for the 2017 Brian Mickelson Memorial Marathon.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Allen made the motion, Councilmember Piper seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Brings us to the end. Claims and adjustments?
I move, we pay the claims and adjustments.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Norman made the motion, Piper seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, pay the claims.
Move, Adrian?
Second.
Okay. Allen made the motion, Al House seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's go home, thank you.
Turn your forms into man.